There's usually not something about it.
You still have to back.
Yeah, hey, Asko, how are you?
I don't remember the other.
Asko, how did it work?
Yeah, our children don't realize how lucky Kate was.
I'll have fun, but I don't remember that being.
I think.
They pay for their care.
Bless us and the men in the way.
We used to play basketball.
You've got an apple.
What did you just do?
Call a meeting to order. If you haven't followed me, thank you for this day and the city in which we live. Guide us this afternoon or evening as we consider our decisions. Come in. Bring my microphone.
Okay.
This is a special call meeting, February twenty second, two thousand and twenty-three of the Noonan City Council. The one item of business we have on our agenda this evening is the presentation from the development partners for Fifty Seven East. So, Mr. Phillips, do you have any opening remarks or do we dive right in?
Jump right in, kind of over to Doug Davidson, your people.
Yes, sir.
Please, come on over to Mr. Doug Davidson.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, council. I'm Doug Davidson. As you can see, introduce me. And I'm happy to be here. And last time we saw you was in the summer. And we have not been in front of this group since, but we have been working hard for the city during that time. So, we're here at the conclusion of our due diligence agreement for Fifty Seven East. And want to kind of go through our agenda for the evening, and then we'll go through the presentation. We do have digital information that can be forwarded to you later, but it will be on the screens. If you can't read it, we'll, they just get copies to you later. We just don't like you flipping straight to the back and not listening along the way. So, but with me today is Dave Duglinski, Josh Magaro, and Randy Beavers, all with our development team. Here with us from Nelson Worldwide, our design partners for this phase of the project is Jeremy Hall and Kerry Gibson. And then here from Haddow Associates is Chris Hall. And so.
And Doug, while we appreciate you introducing all those individually, thank you for doing that. If you do come up to the podium, if you will reintroduce yourself, that would be helpful.
Yes, sir. Okay. So, I kind of want to just briefly give you an overview of, first of all, what we were tasked with for this site and its present state and what it will be as a great benefit to the city at some point in the future. We, part of our agreement was to conduct civic and community engagement sessions to kind of gather the thoughts and the opinions and the desires of the community and the civic associations, the development authority. So, we had those meetings. We wanted to identify and lay out the parcels for their best and highest use through that process of desirability of components. We developed, we were tasked to develop a preliminary development concept plan, just to define, you know, the general layout of the five-plus acres there on the site. And then to develop financial performance, you know, that work and what works the best financially. So, the city is, you know, the best use of the city and the finances of the city council. So, our goals were just to determine how we turn this piece of property into a, almost a connectability to the city square and everything down here and to support the businesses locally, not to compete with any of them, but to make it a well-working and defined, you know, part of the overall city concept plan. So, that was, that was our goal. So, what we did, as you'll hear more detailed about, is we held three different community events. We met with several of the civic associations. We had, you know, just different information gathering sessions to, you know, to see what, what the pros and cons are. And as you might expect, they didn't all stay in line with each other. There's a lot of different thoughts in the community. We also hired a market research company, Haddow and Associates. And you'll hear, you know, what their findings were, that were pretty thorough, what they did. We worked with Nelson Worldwide to create a concept plan that we felt, you know, after looking at several different variations and layouts of that, of the site itself, what we think were the viable options to develop the site. We've got pricing from the market for, you know, the construction, and we got lease rates and that sort of thing to put in these performance. To, all of this to determine the feasibility of this project. So, I want you definitely to keep in mind that this was a due diligence. We're not coming to you and say, here's what needs to be done. During this hundred-and-twenty-day period, we, with the best information we had, we put together some concepts and we put together a financial formula to show you. We're, so we wanted to put it in front of you. And then lastly, we want to go through a timeline and help define, you know, where we go forward in making those decisions and the next step. So, kind of our order of agenda, just to let you know what we're going to do. David's going to give us just a brief market status, you know, overview of where we see the market, you know, the debt market, the equity market, the construction market, and where we see that at this present time and possibly where it may go through this year. Randy's going to go through our community engagement and hit the high points of what we heard from different groups. And then the market study, Josh and Chris are going to go through that. And then Jeremy and Kerry will go through the design concepts. And then we'll, at that point, go through the financial studies that we've done. And then a timeline of what we'd see if we decide, or you guys decide a later date to move forward and the next steps of the process. So, we're happy to be here. And then lastly, of course, we want to be here to answer questions as you, as you gather all this. We will have, again, we'll have hard copies of this. We have copies of the Haddow report for you to look at, to see the work we've put in. So, again, we appreciate you being here tonight and allowing us to present our findings.
Thank you, Doug. And I would like to say, you know, for the, for the public, it's, we've not seen this before. You're seeing it, we're seeing it all at the same time. So, as we step through it, we consider this a first step in a very slow and lengthy process. So, appreciate you being here.
Sure. Dave Duglinski with the development team. So, I just want to reinforce what Doug said. What we're proposing and putting in front of you today is just some recommended options. We consider this just to be step one of a process that will lead to what will be ultimately the highest and best use for this project. And that's not necessarily just what's the highest and best use for the private developers. Also, more importantly, what's most, what's the highest and best use for the public and the constituents of the city. You know, obviously, there's some significant headwinds out there. I think everyone reads the headline and watches the news, either from supply chain disruptions to inflation, construction costs. Probably the biggest obstacle we have right now is interest rates. So, you know, with interest rates basically rising and what we forecast continue to rise through two thousand and twenty-three, with some potential relief in two thousand and twenty-four, construction debt has become really expensive. And it's not just the price of the construction debt, it's also the availability of the construction debt. So, even the most well-capitalized developers throughout the nation are really struggling to get access to debt capital. And as debt capital gets more expensive, the equity capital also gets more expensive. So, you know, we've got some capital markets volatility that we're contending with. But from our perspective, we really tried to focus on the strengths of this asset, you know, the market, the location, the market demand, and try to say, okay, if some of these levers or some of these headwinds kind of corrected, what would be the best possible outcome for this site? And there's, there's different options, you know, there's, you know, there's, we studied single uses, we studied mixed uses, we looked at what provided the most public benefit. And, you know, the honest answer at the end of the day is there's not a lot that works and that's viable in today's environment, just because of some of those challenges. So, each of the options that you'll see tonight probably require some level of public subsidy. And so, you know, we know that residential has been a challenging discussion in the past, but obviously, that requires X amount of subsidy. And as you start to introduce other more attractive or public benefit uses, sexier for word, but it just, the scale kind of slides, right? And so, we fully appreciate the city has made a massive investment in this site, in this location. But we just want to, we want to put that out there because we do believe in the site, we do believe it's viable, we do believe, long-term, it will provide a lot of public benefit and activation of the downtown corridor. But, you know, you'll see that all of our conclusions kind of reach the same data point at the end. And again, we took a very objective view, and it was just, it was just the numbers. So, you know, we have considered residential, we've considered commercial, retail, creative office, hospitality, public space, you know, healthcare, and we've evaluated it all. So, with, with that, I think, you know, the goal would be to let really the team present each of their, each of their disciplines. And, you know, we want this to be as interactive as we possibly can. We consider this more of a work session and a first step. I think our goal at the end of this presentation is to continue down the kind of planning process, take feedback that we get from council, take feedback that we get from after the meeting, and then start to think about that and process that in different types of scenario analysis down the road. So.
Okay. Any questions so far?
Good evening. My name is Randy Beavers, and I'm part of the development team as well. If we could flip to the slide that starts with community engagement? Yep.
Nope.
Nope. Yeah. As Doug mentioned, the first step in our process was to really hear from as many of the community members, residents, constituents as we possibly could. We heard a lot of input in these sessions, and we'll have, as they leave behind, some of the deeper notes, but I just want to walk through some of the key takeaways that we heard. If we can move to the next slide. So, we started with the Downtown Development Authority. Then we had a second meeting, which was engaging with what we would call special interest groups or, you know, civic leadership in different forms and fashions. And then the third meeting we held was for the general public, and this was all back in November. Some of the biggest data points that we heard, and there were a lot, these were well-attended meetings, sixty in one meeting, eighty people in another. And we've got a laundry list of notes, but some of the high points were that we need to embrace what Noonan is today, both architecturally, but also from, you know, a community standpoint, how we're programming the site with events, the different uses, as well as the tenant mix. You know, food and beverage doesn't mean one thing. So, we had specific recommendations about the types of food and beverage uses that we would want to see. One of the biggest points that we heard, and, you know, we continue to be committed to, is that this should be accretive to downtown. This should be complementary to what downtown is now and help, you know, do our part to maintain the character that people love about Noonan, but also find ways to add to it. You know, as Dave touched on, you know, it's been a point of contention or debate, whatever you want to call it, no apartments versus apartments. We had, I think surprisingly, a lot of feedback from people who said, I'm not for or against apartments. I'm for all the things that may come with it, public spaces, food and beverage. So, we certainly heard a lot of people say, we do not want apartments. This is not something that Noonan needs. But we heard in the, in the two meetings that we held at the end of November, a lot of people, downtown business owners and residents, say, you know, we're not necessarily looking to relocate. We've already invested in a business here, we already own a home here, or decided to reside here. And we do want the public spaces, the food and beverage, the commercial, the wellness. And, and again, as Dave and Doug have pointed out, we're, I think, looking at this from the numbers. So, our preference is really, at the end of the day, whatever the city's preference is. But that was a point that we wanted to get feedback on. The, the uses that had the most resounding support were a market and a grocery store, some wellness uses. And that's a bigger umbrella that really entails an urgent care. We heard people talk about, you know, a new gym or different types of fitness offerings, and then food and beverage. And again, food and beverage coming in different forms and fashions. But that was, really seemed to be more or less unanimous support for those three things. Community space and programming, we heard, was very important. We heard that collaboration with the city and with Main Street is also important to the community. And again, that's something that we've been committed to from the start. And then, of course, we've heard hotel as a resounding use across all the meetings. And, but, similar to apartments, the hotel use got some debate. Again, from our standpoint, it was really just about hearing what the community had to say. There was some feedback around the amount of space that a hotel might take up or the additional amount of parking that a hotel might require. And then, obviously, parking and grid impact should be well-thought-out, you know, having comprehensive solutions for how we, if we're bringing density or people into the downtown, how we're accommodating that vehicular traffic, and then, obviously, taking our time to do this thoughtfully and do it well. This is not a fly-by-night group, and this is certainly not, we understand the impact and the gravity that this development will have in downtown. So, our goal in, in having these conversations and hearing from the community was then to integrate this into the site planning. So, combining this with the objective, you know, market-based due diligence that was done, which Chris and Josh will speak to, we, we look at this as, you know, if the market is providing the framework, this is really the color that we can add to this. So, you'll see as we go through the different versions of the site plans that we studied, we tried to look at what would the impact of apartments be if we laid them out in different ways, you know, trying to understand what the, the physical site constraints would be. You know, can we afford to get all of the uses that we heard from the community onto one five-and-a-half-acre parcel, given its size and shape and location? And I think as we go through this, you'll, you'll see how we aimed to integrate the feedback that we got with the market studies to create and stress some different scenarios. So, there are three more slides, but I don't think we, we need to necessarily go through those. Those are sort of designed as the leave behind, but these were sort of the key summaries that we heard. But if you want to flip to the next one, you know, we can at least kind of touch on each of the meetings. You know, some of the different uses that we heard, some of the questions that we received, meeting to meeting, were obviously different. The preferred land uses were, were slightly different. We tried to rank those in order of the level of support that they received in each meeting. We want to go to the next slide. So, this is the first November seventeenth, the special interest group. Like I said, we had approximately seventy attendees here. And as you go through these, you know, it's a lot of the same themes, just articulated by the community in different ways. And we can go to the last slide. So, we've tried to break these down between the key takeaways and the preferred land uses, the feedback that we got, and, as I mentioned, integrating those into the remainder of the due diligence and the planning effort. Go to the next page. So, if there are questions before we dive into market. So if there are questions before we dive into market study, happy to answer. I know a lot of y'all were at those sessions and you heard it firsthand, but for those who weren't, you know.
Michelle, what? I just wanna comment, I attended those meetings and on the subject of apartments, no apartments, what I heard was overwhelmingly no apartments. I heard one lady say she was in favor of apartments, but overwhelmingly everyone else said no apartments. On the subject of when you said condo quality apartments, people said they don't mind condos, but they do want apartments.
So, I mean, just to respond to that, in the last session that we had, there were about, well, I think there were two residents specifically who were vehemently opposed to apartments. And it actually got somewhat heated. There were some of my neighbors and, and, you know, four downtown business owners who were very adamantly in favor of not necessarily apartments, but whatever uses it took within reason, within limits to finance and bring to life the amenities. And, you know, our notes were taken in real time directly from, and those have actually been submitted to the city, so you have the raw notes, and this is the synthesis that, that we heard. So there were certainly a lot of passionate responses for no apartments. We actually, at the second meeting, made the executive decision to, to sort of intervene in what was really a conversation amongst community members. So again, you know, our job here is to relay what, what we heard, what we saw. You know, again, we, we are trying to take an objective approach to due diligence here, but, you know, that's, that's what we heard, that's what we saw, and that's what we're reporting here today.
And I wanna say that I was at those meetings and what I heard, what citizens have been overwhelmingly saying. So, thanks.
Yeah. Obviously, we're not privy to private feedback, but as council persons, y'all are hearing from a lot of your constituents and, you know, we, we obviously take that into consideration in, in the waiting, but appreciate the, the feedback.
I have a question for you. When you say condo quality apartments, what do you mean by that? Could you define that?
That was a comment that we heard, so that's a quote we took from the meeting. So the discussion was around, you know, people not wanting to see, you know, I don't wanna coin any phrases or, or use any, you know, stereotypical terms, but people wanted higher quality construction. They don't want an asset in downtown that is gonna dilapidate quickly if it's not, you know, built correctly, right? So I think it was, what we took out of it was that it's a level of construction quality that people wanted to see if multifamily was being considered.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Beavers.
All right. Hi, my name is Chris Hall. I'm a real estate consultant with Haddo and Company. We're, we're based in Atlanta. And our, we work all over the southeast. We work for developers, cities, colleges, and universities. One of our passions is downtown revitalization and downtown consulting work. We've recently worked in the city of Sandy Springs, we're working in the city of Fayetteville, in Powder Springs, so we have a lot of experience in the metro area, looking at, at what works in, in downtowns. So I'm excited to be part of the team with, with Fides and this group and, and working on the, the Noonan site. We've had our eye on this site for a long time, always thought it was a great site, so I'm glad the city purchased it and, and hopefully we can be part of the solution to what happens on, on the property. But when we undertake a, a market study like this, I mean, we do, we do a few, a few things. One is obviously we look at the, the demographic data, we go out and we survey apartments, we survey retail, talk to brokers and, you know, try to get an understanding of vacancy rates, what things are leasing for, all the, kind of the, the basic nuts and bolts of, of real estate. We also, when we're working on sites like this and down, in the context of a downtown, we look at what's worked well in other downtowns. What can we learn from other places, from what's worked and, you know, maybe what hadn't worked? So that was really the way we approached this, is kind of the, the data side and then sort of the interview side, talking to brokers, leasing agents, and looking at what's worked in other downtowns in metro Atlanta. So that's kind of who we are, that's kind of our methodology when we approach these things. So if you could move to the next slide, please. Some of our, our key findings, I guess, just starting, you know, what's, what's unique about, not unique, but what's special about downtown Noonan is you walk around and there's hardly any vacancy in downtown. It's a very vibrant downtown, very traditional downtown focused around the courthouse square. The, the restaurants seem to be doing pretty well. The office market, there's more of a, an office market than I think we anticipated. There's a coworking facility over here, seventy-five-hundred, what's the address? But it's right near the site, seventy-five-hundred square feet, fully occupied. A lot of accountants, lawyers, insurance agents have their office around the square 'cause they wanna be near the courthouse. So a pretty vibrant office market, a strong retail market, not only restaurants, but there's also a lot of soft goods around the square, which was great to see. So when you look at downtown, it's already a vibrant place, and then you've got obviously this five-acre site within, you know, two blocks of the courthouse square, which, which is a, a, a great opportunity. We also looked at the apartment market. We, we surveyed the newer apartment communities, most of which are located outside, outside of downtown Noonan. They're very well occupied, getting high rents. The average monthly rent at these communities is almost eighteen-hundred dollars a month, so the, these aren't cheap. And who's living in those apartments? I mean, we think that it's a diverse tenant mix. You've got empty nesters, you've got young professionals, and you've got some families. It's, it's a wide variety. So what conclusions did we draw? Well, we, we think there's a, a market opportunity certainly for apartments. We think not only is there a market opportunity, but in our research and work in metro Atlanta and other downtowns, it's a key ingredient for a successful downtown. The rooftops not only support the retail, but they just bring energy to downtown. So we definitely, there's a, a market there. And what we talked about in terms of, we talk about the quality of the apartments, what the rents are gonna be, we thought that you could get rents almost two thousand dollars a month at the downtown with, with an apartment project on the, on the subject property. And then there, we go on to talk about the, the bedroom mix, et cetera. We also think there's a, a market for, for sale product in that three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-thousand-dollar range, a townhome product. There's some existing townhomes that are on the other side of downtown over here that are expensive. I think they've done well, but maybe sold at, at a little bit of a slower pace. We would suggest something that's more, more attainable from a price point. We think there's an opportunity for some type of coworking space, kind of flex office space. We don't think there's an, a, a market for somebody to build a speculative office building that, that you would lease up to, to multiple tenants. We think really the opportunities for small, you know, if you're familiar with what a coworking space is, it's where people rent out a, a desk by the, by the day or by the week, but we, we feel their support for that. We think that there's definitely an opportunity for some retail and restaurants, and actually there's a, we think there's a market for a lot of the uses that Randy talked about that we heard from the citizens at the public meetings, we think there's an opportunity for a fitness concept. And then we think restaurants that are kind of surround a public green space with outdoor dining would do very well. You know, we'd say two or three of those type of restaurants. We think potentially a micro food hall, which is where you have a, let's just say, a five-thousand square foot space, but you might have multiple operators, almost like food trucks, but they're inside of the, the food hall and where people go in and order at the counter, and they might go outside and sit and eat at, at outside tables or around the green space. So that's, so we think there's a lot of, a lot of opportunity. In terms of a hotel, we think potentially there's a, an opportunity, there was a, a hotel market study done, I think it was about a year ago, that looked at three different sites in Coweta County. They did look at fifty-seven East Broad. Ultimately, the study concluded that Sanoy was the preferred location for a hotel. But the hotels, we did survey a lot of the hotels here in the market, they're well occupied, and they get a lot of demand from people going to the, the hospital and the Cancer Treatment Center of America. So we think, while we think there may be a hotel opportunity on the site, we're not hotel experts. Any developer or group that looked at it would, would, would commission their own hotel study, so that is, that is, needs to be further investigated. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, and this just kind of is a little more detail on what I, I just talked about, in terms of the retail, you know, fifteen-thousand square feet, again, that could be three or four restaurants, a food hall, a yoga studio, other types of service-oriented retail, maybe some kind of a healthcare component. And with terms of restaurants that you might attract here, what we thought was it's probably a, a group that's already operating on the south side of Atlanta, maybe in Peachtree City, maybe in Fayetteville, maybe in Fairburn, who might wanna open a, another location in downtown Noonan, because it's, it's obviously very attractive. And then there's some of the uses that we talk about. And then we don't think you should pursue soft goods at this site, you got enough of that around the square, and you don't wanna draw energy or try to compete with the, the retail businesses around the square. Next slide, please. And as I mentioned, we, that's an example, that's a picture of a coworking facility where they have these individual desks, but that's really what we think the, the opportunity is in, on this site. And again, we don't think there's an opportunity for somebody to do a spec office building.
Just could I interrupt a second? Is that office space considered ground floor or above?
Could be either or. It could be on the ground floor, or you could have it as a second floor where you walk up to it.
Okay. Based, based on what you looked at, what is the typical story size of these buildings? Is it multi-level?
Well, the one, the one that's, oh, you can do it on one level, seventy-five-hundred square feet on one level. Yeah, there's one here in town, as I mentioned, that's seventy-five-hundred square feet, and I think that's a one-level building. It's a two, too, but you could do it on, you could do it on a seventy-five-hundred-square-foot floor plate, right, in one level. Or you could do two, it just depends on what works from the architectural standpoint and the...
Okay. One more quick question, just for the non-realtors in here. What do you mean by speculative office building?
It's where you'd go out and build a, you'd, you'd build, I don't know, twenty-thousand-square-foot office building without a tenant. Like there's a building, vinyl aluminum, that's under construction over here, but they have a tenant, vinyl aluminum, who's occupying two-thirds of the, of the building, and I think they're leasing out the ground floor. You could never get an office building financed today without it being almost, you know, probably a hundred percent, you know, pre-leased. It'd be very difficult. All right.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes. Thank you for your time, and there's starting to be some interest in the area, the south side of Atlanta, for children's healthcare specifically, because we have to run to the north side of Atlanta for anything like that. So that may be something you'd wanna look into a little further.
Yeah. And I think that would be, you know, a question, obviously you'd go talk to, who would you talk to? Piedmont or North, or talk to a medical group to see what the interest level would be, but then it's how do you fit it into the development to, to make it work from a programmatic standpoint, but certainly something that, that needs to be looked into.
I think maybe in more specific, like children's healthcare.
Yeah, CHOA would be, would be the group. Yeah.
And they only have partnerships with Piedmont and Fayetteville as well, so.
Okay. Anything else? Nothing else, Chris?
Yeah. Next slide. Again, this just talks about the, the market opportunity for residential, based on the performance of the existing communities in, in Noonan. You know, we think there's a market for a, you know, a luxury apartment building. And again, in our opinion, it's, it's an important ingredient of a successful downtown. And then again, we think there is a, is also a, a for-sale opportunity here for, for townhomes. And then just recap of the hotels, again, that's gonna take further, further investigation. I will say, is that they say here a public subsidy would be required for a hotel. And most of the examples, I know you're probably familiar, there was a, a hotel done in downtown La Grange, there's one that's getting ready to open up in downtown Lawrenceville. Most of the hotels that we've seen in these, in smaller downtown settings require some type of, of a public subsidy in our, our experience.
Is that a public subsidy for a, a short term or a very long term, or what do you think?
It could be, I mean, you've seen, I, they vary. I've seen property tax abatements, it can be for, you know, ten years or, or longer, or it could be a, some sort of subsidy where they contribute to a parking deck or some parking solution. It just, it just depends. And that's one of the, the, the issues with a, if, if a hotel were to go on this site is how do you park it? Cause it's, it's parking intensive. Yeah, and this just goes back over our, our recommendations. And again, we've, we brought seven copies of the report here, which provides a lot more detail and, and backup for what I'm saying. So feel free to read through that report and, you know, let us know if you have any questions. But yeah, we think, we, we think it's a, a great opportunity to have some restaurants and other uses centered on that, on the green space with some, some type of residential behind it. We think it, it would fit, fit well together, so.
I have a question. Did you all have any information on whether or not incubators, you know, small business incubators, would be a viable option in this? So you're talking about the cowork space, but what about incubator for small businesses?
Um, I mean, I think maybe that could be done in conjunction with a coworking arrangement. I don't think it would be a, a use that would, would take up, you know, much, much square footage. We have seen where cities have sponsored incubators in, in, in other downtowns. But yeah, I mean, I think it could be a consideration as part of the, the office component.
And then technology industry. I noticed that you talked about staying away from retail, but a lot of information I've seen talked about, maybe the options for technology businesses, tech businesses to locate, but your report didn't say anything about that, so I wonder if that was not something that came up.
Well, particular, I mean, again, like I don't, we wouldn't see a big tech company of, of any size being drawn particularly to this site. Again, if there was a small tech company that had two or three employees that might wanna rent space in the coworking space. I mean, the nice thing about like a startup tech company is a lot of times they don't have the capital to go out and sign a, a, a long-term lease. The nice thing about coworking is it provides you flexibility because you're not committing to a, to a long-term, you know, lease. So we really think that coworking is kind of the, the best of both worlds. It gets some office, provides an office opportunity for small user groups who couldn't afford to go out and lease a, you know, do a five-to-ten-year lease at a bigger office building. So I think it's almost serves as like an incubator kind of format.
On the tech side, I think there's been a massive contraction in tech jobs nationally, and so...
Dave Gublinski. But, you know, what we've observed and what we're seeing within the tech space is that there's actually downsizing, both in terms of employees, but also in terms of the office space that they occupy. And Microsoft's a perfect example. You know, they pulled out of their ninety-acre campus in Atlanta, was publicly announced a couple of weeks ago, which has a huge economic hit. We still think having an innovative kind of approach to office, where you kinda go high-designed, a little bit more leading, cutting-edge in terms of design, will attract those types of creatives and the tech jobs that you'd want to have occupied, because they typically are more active, they activate the spaces, and it creates an energy. And so I think with anything that we would design from an office perspective, it'd be a little bit more modern-focused than it would be more traditional office. And so that's why we focus on the coworking, because a lot of the employees that actually function in coworking spaces tend to be tech jobs or remote workers, things like that. On the incubation side, we have seen, like, like Chris mentioned, typically those are subsidized by someone. Sometimes a venture capital fund will basically, basically allow, you know, incubators to, to exist within their space, they'll pay for the office space, but they'll take a piece of the company. And so at the end of the day, usually incubators are startups, they're, they're short on capital, so the subsidy has to come from somewhere. It either comes from a public partnership or a private partnership. And so we do like... And so we do like to weave that into the genetics and kind of the DNA of all these mixed-use developments because it does provide a level of energy overall that really is accretive to the overall, overall development.
Stepping back to the hotel piece for a second, did you, did you, was the thought that any meeting space would be incorporated in that, in that hotel area?
So, you know, we did evaluate a bunch of different concepts. You know, it's, it's, what we heard through the community sessions is they wanted to be more boutique in nature, which a lot of the general public space or community space for, you know, community events and gathering spaces usually underprogrammed in those types of hotels. You know, there was the courtyard by Maria concepts, which we didn't really feel would be an accretive brand for downtown or for the development. And so in any of the concepts that we evaluated, I would say the meeting space was undersized relative to kind of more of a traditional development. And I think partially that was driven by the fact that we didn't want to compete with some of the existing meeting spaces that already existed in the downtown. And so, you know, as far as the public subsidy is concerned, you know, that's one element. And I know this has been brought up before, but like the Avalon development, the city funded basically the convention portion and the garage, right? And the land. So that was the way that that development, that hotel was able to basically deliver that product, was that the city was the person on the meeting space. So they, the city basically owns the convention space, they own the parking deck, and they own the land underneath.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Bubba? Yes, sure. One question on the hotel, and Mayor had asked about the meeting space. Was there any thought given to full-service, serving hot meals type?
We, we, I'm going to, I mean, Josh, you're on the turn.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
No, it's all right. Josh, we're here.
Thank you, Dave.
Speaking to that, we really relied on the Explore Newton and Calwida study that was done by HVS Consulting last July, so not long ago, much less than a year ago, which looked at it for the specific use of a full-service hotel and ultimately concluded that it was not the proper location for such a use.
Kind of a follow-on question to that. In the second paragraph, I'm seeing some contradictions, says a hotel is the preferred use, but if it's not being viable, then townhomes. Earlier, everything was townhomes, not a hotel. So where are we at on that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we looked at, through the market study, Chris did attend the community sessions as well, so not a lot of people came out and said, "Townhomes, townhomes," but you did have a, a collection of folks who said a hotel would be nice. So when he speaks to a hotel would be a preferred use, I think that is the fact-finding mission from not just the data of the market or, you know, a third-party study that Explore Newton and Calwida concluded, it was the preferred use of the community, potentially over townhomes, given the community's feedback during those public meetings.
Okay, and one other quick question is, with the lack of parking, you know, in the space, was there any consideration given to only off-site parking and making this whole campus like walking pedestrian only?
I would say no. We did look at off-side parking, but in order to bring the uses of the commercial space to try to adhere to the zoning covenants of the city and parking requirements thereof, we did not look at a no-parking development. No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask, and I've not heard, I don't think I've heard suggestions of any government use, whether it would be county, city, school board, or whatever.
I think that would be a very welcome use and, you know, again, going back to what Chris was speaking to, speculative office, impossible to get financed if you have a municipal use as an acre tenant. I think that would be a fantastic way to explore functioning office space.
It would help on the financing side.
No doubt about it. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Were you the next one up? Just by luck?
I think I may have, may have jumped out of, jumped out of order. Yeah, we're going to bring up the Nelson team to kind of, they, they basically took the findings from the community hearings, the findings from the market study, and kind of put that to work in doing what they do best. So I'll let Jeremy share that.
Well, we appreciate the community input. Sometimes a community can make a mistake, and I hope you have the courage to tell us that if the community is making that mistake.
The newspaper's not here this evening.
Can we jump to slide 22?
My name is Jeremy Hall with Nelson. We're based out in Atlanta and we've, you know, we've been engaged on this site with the development team. We also have some history working with you guys on some initial studies. So we're very well-versed in what's going on in Newton and with this particular site in general. And so what we've been helping the team with is just come to some visualizations on how program scenarios can play out on the site, taking into account all that community feedback and how do we create a development that is complementary to the downtown environment and becomes part of that fabric so that over time it's just a piece that's been there? And what are the elements that go into making that as successful as we can? And a lot of that's what we're going to see, we're going to show you some images, then we're going to show through a couple of site plan options that we've studied just to show you some, some variability in, in what we looked at. So this image is, this is looking from Broad Street into the site. So you'd have a kind of central green space, plaza space in the middle that could be used for programming, outdoor events, outdoor patios for restaurants. This would be programmed in conjunction with what's going on with the global programming of downtown Newton. And so it's not, we wouldn't want to do anything here that conflicts with the bigger picture. It's really a, a space that goes along with everything that's already been programmed and can be just one more avenue.
Can you jump to the next slide?
And so...
Jeremy, can you, if you go, one quick question. How large is the green space, do you know?
So it's, it's, it's probably a little less than a third of an acre in total if you go from kind of building face to building face.
Okay.
And so it's about a hundred feet wide and, and maybe, you know, a hundred fifty feet deep. It might be a little closer to a quarter acre. So it's not overly scaled to compete with the main square, but it's big enough that we can do a series of events, you know, here, like, you know, yoga on the lawn or outdoor, you know, titty events.
So you're talking like a hundred by a hundred and fifty or something like that?
Roughly, yeah. I mean, I think, and that's subject to, you know, kind of massaging a little bit with the buildings, but that's about the scale that's drawn in there today, so. And so surrounding the, surrounding the green space would be a series of commercial spaces. So this is the, you know, this building would have commercial on the ground floor, maybe the loft office coworking spaces on the second floor of this building. There'd be some more commercial spaces you stitch back in on the ground floor of the building, kind of in the back of the image there. This is kind of turned around inside the development, looking back toward Broad Street, what that building would look like. So the massing could be broken down to be in scale with the, you know, the current architecture, not current, but the existing architecture of Newton and materials that are authentic to, to the downtown area. So break it up with restaurants, we could do some unique outdoor patio spaces, make this very friendly to the link trail connectivity with bikes and pedestrians and, you know, walking experiences. So this kind of internal space might be more pedestrian-oriented where the vehiculars would be moved to the back of the buildings and around so that we can, you know, if we wanted to close this off for an event, it'd be easy to do without disrupting traffic flow or something like that, so. And so a couple of site plan options here. So this is the base site plan option that we've looked at, which, we've kind of looked at a number of different scenarios of how we can kind of orient and organize the parts and pieces on the site plan from north to south, east to west, to make sure that, you know, the road network and things works and what's the most efficient layout of the different building types. And so what you'll see here is kind of coming in from Broad Street, that's that central green space that we talked about, and it may not be all grass. It's probably going to be a combination of grass and hardscape when it's all said and done. Maybe there might be a water feature in it, you know, be very, very active, you know, from a design standpoint. And that's surrounded by, it's got some townhomes on the left side, so that'd be kind of for-sale product that's there, kind of bookending the left side of the space. The right side would be the, the commercial space with some loft office above it, and then we have the, you know, residential there to the south with ground floor, retail, commercial fronting out onto the green, nesting the parking kind of in the middle, hiding it, and then they have another private courtyard in there that we could, you know, use to help to buffer from the railroad noise and those kind of things. Spring Street would be extended into the site from the, from the west, extending that downtown grid in there. And then along the very eastern side of the site is the, you know, extension of the link trail connecting back into that network that's there. So we want to make sure we're, you know, very mindful of that connectivity because that's a great traffic generator from that. So there's another, there's a secondary option.
On, on that first option then, what you have up there, how many apartments you programmed into that one?
There's two-hundred-and-twenty-five drawn in that plan.
Okay.
The next option, so we looked at, we looked at, again, a couple of different orientations. So this was kind of breaking the, the residential up into two bigger blocks, you know, across the street, move the green space kind of to the east up against the rail line and the trail, and then reorganizing where some of the commercial space there, just moving the townhomes all the way to the very south end of the site. This, you know, it's got some interesting ideas to it, but the green space becomes a little more one-sided in this environment, and it's open to the rail corridor, which might provide some safety issues if kids run around in there, so. But, and then, and then the multifamily's kind of broken up into different segments, making it a little less efficient to build and block out in there, so. But this was just one option to show that we looked at variability. And then there's another option we looked at that did include a hotel in there. Again, extending the grid in from Spring, in from Broad, and then re, this one doesn't have the for-sale townhomes in it. That's kind of been replaced by the, the hotel option in here. We've used it to kind of, you know, line the rail edge of the site, looking in toward the plaza, there'd be a drop-off there on the plaza, that space could be very active. But this starts to pinch that space down a good bit. It ratchets this down probably even half as big as the previous scheme. So there's just some push and pull there to get it, you know, to get what's the right-sized space and those kind of things. But we did look at an option that included it and see how it fit in. We thought it was valuable to have kind of frontage and connectivity to Broad Street from a wayfinding ability and a placemaking standpoint. And then the office, that little building on the very north end of the green space is, that would be where the, the office space would be over top of some retail there, too. So that building is kind of moved on the Broad Street frontage, so the plaza is a little more internalized in this as opposed to kind of opening itself up to the Broad Street frontage. And then lastly, the, it does, you know, in order to park that hotel efficiently, it probably does require some, some substantial off-site parking to make that scenario work because it's a, it's going to, you know, its peak parking is going to be the same time as the residential, so we can't do a lot of shared use there from a parking standpoint. So it explored a, a parking deck shared amongst the downtown environment, so. So those are kind of the overarching themes of the thing. If you want to just roll back through those visuals real quick again so we can reorient, you know, scale the buildings is, you know, that residential in the back is four stories with ground-level retail on the plaza. The retail's on the first floor, we've got some second-floor office there on the left. Again, we think the higher building against the rail corridor is nice to help kind of buffer some noise and, and buffer that use there. And then we've got the, the townhomes to the right, and they could be a nice three-story product with their ground-floor entrances and everything opening up onto the space. They could have rear access for parking and for the residents to come in and guests, and, and they could walk right out into the, into the central space there. It could be really dynamic, so. And then just an up-close view of what that, you know, retail could be, how you could have outdoor patios breaking out onto, not only Broad Street, but to the central plaza. Again, showing we have places for bike racks, those kind of connectivities of respecting the link trail and its connection. And then we spin around the other way, it's the other end of that building with the, you can go one more, the other end of that building where it might be more of a one-story restaurant, retail opportunity, then it's got a big patio on the end that could be kind of an open-air environment, but it kind of looks like it's part of a building that the roof might have been taken off over time. So just some ways to play with the architecture and the space-making to really get a bunch of complementary uses to help us activate that central space and really tie into what's going on with the whole downtown kind of community.
Questions with Jeremy?
I have a question.
All right.
This particular one, the first one that you showed, you had mentioned on the last one was two-hundred-and-twenty-five apartments. Are all, is two-hundred-and-twenty-five apartments the standard number throughout all that you're showing us? You just showed the townhouses, but yet you didn't mention apartments in the first slide, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, I think in the, in the hotel option, it's a little less because there's a little less efficiency in the site, so it was down around...
Two-oh-eight.
Two-oh-eight in that particular option. The other two did show two-twenty-five, which is a, tends to be a pretty good number to make them efficient to build and, you know, two less, it becomes a little, the skew becomes out of whack on.
So when you use the term, excuse my ignorance, but we use the term for clarity's sake, off-site parking, which I'm still trying to have the concept of where on earth that would be. Can you tell me, what are you referring to and where do you see that being?
Well, in that particular option, we were showing it across the street on, I think there's the county parking lot that's across the street right now. I know that that was an option that we looked at kind of in the past, and so that's where we showed it for the time being, just to make homage that there would need to be a parking deck built somewhere in that fabric.
Somewhere on Worthy County?
Or within the downtown fabric. That site may not be the exact one, but it, it probably doesn't want to be a block or two away, it wants to be within close proximity for the hotel to operate correctly.
Ultimately, keep flipping or I can come up to the podium and you can run it.
Y'all need mics.
Randy Beavers, development team. I think the exercise was to understand the constraints of the site, right? So these are conceptual plans that helped us understand what limits and constraints we're up against. And so there are assumptions that we can't make, and off-site parking is, it's a big one, right? So it helps us understand, you know, A versus B, you know, what are the additional diligence items and entitlement items, whether it's variances to Councilman Krikko's point, you know, if we were going to go below the city's required parking counts, you know, those are assumptions that we, we just can't make at this point.
Interesting.
But we can at least model them to understand, you know, what would lay ahead if the city chooses one plan versus another.
I've got a couple of questions. Can you go back to the site plan? And it doesn't matter which one. Okay, so it does a great job of addressing East Broad Street, but I feel like the other three sides are kind of turning its back on the rest of what's going on around it. And so I'm really hoping that you all will go back and look at ways to engage or connect this to some of the other that's going on around it, particularly down here in South Beatty. It feels like it's the back of the site and that it's kind of like where you drive your trash truck in almost, but that's a whole street residential that opens up to a whole neighborhood. It needs to be addressed with as much detail as the front side of East Broad. And then one opportunity that I hadn't had a chance to, to say to any of you is that that northwest corner, right there where the old Roscoe Jenkins Funeral Home used to be, where Ward Law is, is our historic Black Business District. And I think there's an opportunity there to connect some of this cowork space and an incubator space to recreate and expand that history and make that something very special that isn't just plopping something down, but really enhancing what's already there. So that's one area I'd really like to see you all address. I do like the connectivity that we've talked about with Spring Street. I'd really like to see you all explore more about keeping that there because opening those grids up for traffic, pedestrian, and vehicular, I think are important to that connectivity to downtown. The, you show the park over there, what we have now decided as a group will be our bicentennial park. The bicentennial park, in my opinion, I hope really tells the story of who we are as a community because our bicentennial's coming up in '28. And I think that having some of that reflected in this project would be very helpful as And I think the last comment I had was on the massing. The first thing I thought of when I saw that first massing study was Ponce and Pike Place Market with the sign and all that up there. I'm like, we're really trying to go for something more Newton and not throwing you into the mind of another city.
Sure.
So I'd really like to see some more originality there.
Okay. Yeah, I think there, we also paid some homage in some of the, there was like signage kind of embedded in the building facades, too, as well as in some of those images. So I understand your point about the, kind of the rooftop sign, that could be a, take a leave. And I think as far as the, as the residential goes on the south end, I think the intent is really, you know, we have also grade on that side of the site that's kind of working up, so that road sits a little bit higher than the rest of the site. So we may be able to help step the building down as it addresses that, that residential to the south, and so that facade would be activated to try to, to provide a very nice residential. It wouldn't be the back of a building, it'd be, it'd be the fronts of all the units, and maybe there'd be some stoops that come out of the street or something like that to make it, you know, feel engaging with that street environment.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I've noticed one thing, I like the Spring Street entrance into the property, but there's also the opportunity to have a north entrance off of the property that we've had for a... that we've had for a number of years. And it would come through the parking lot from Arnold Road Street on into this that you haven't shown or maybe you have it in your mind and you haven't done it yet.
Andrews Street. That's the one you're talking about?
Yeah, so you're talking about kind of going up kind of where that curb cut is to the north side of the little blue building, right? Yeah, and some of it is just, you know, we included connectivity. You know, those aren't lined up in this plan. A lot of that had to do with the spatial dimensions of the green space, which we're trying to achieve. But I think ultimately we'd want to explore if we can make those alignments work.
Include it all the way to the north through the police department and pickleball court and the cemeteries. It would be another entrance into downtown.
I've got a question. Did you all ask them about that? About looking at, you know, design all the way from Salbeedie all the way up to?
No, no, we didn't. We, I know this particular body talked about doing that.
Yes, we did.
We also had talked about, was this the right entity to do that? Do we need another entity to do that? Their particular contract was actually worth five and a half acres high.
Okay, that's good.
So there's still an opportunity to talk about all of this stuff that we have had. Because that was a robust conversation we all had about including all of these different studies that we've had done over the years. Our LCI study being one of them, the Andrews Street expansion that Kim Oldham did many years ago. And that LCI study even calls for a multimodal transportation hub right there at the Train Depot, which would of course leak all the way through Andrews Street. So those are things I think you all should look at at least because that's something we're interested in looking at.
Yeah, that'd be great context to have, yeah.
Any other questions?
You mentioned, as Mr. Giel said, 225 apartments, but you didn't say how many townhomes.
Uh, there's eight townhomes drawn in the plan.
Eight?
Yep.
And I'll just say that to me is totally backwards. I think we all know what happens long-term with apartments and what happens long-term with homeownership. Just the police calls that we get from apartments, long-term down the road, everything. On the backside, the south side, and I agree with the comment that I don't want it to look like it's the back of an alley or the back of buildings or that type of thing. Because we're, we're trying to promote that area also. And we've got investors who are coming in and starting restaurants and pubs and things like that. And then we're trying to improve the area out to the east. So I'd like to see where you can make that look more user-friendly or just better looking. Not, I just don't want it to look like it's the back.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. That makes sense.
But also with the bit about the townhomes. But it's just, I, I feel homeownership is the way to go. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have another one. A couple of comments. I noticed in all your renderings, you didn't hit anything on the rooftop. It was mentioned earlier and it had been hit several times. There was nothing about rooftop utilization. The...
Yeah, I think, I think I forgot to call it out. There is a rooftop on top of, on top of the residential that's there. And then we did show some space kind of breaking out of the office, the cowork. You might have a patio that's on the roof of the building sitting next to it kind of thing. So there could be some spaces like that. That could be a restaurant patio up there. It could be a patio for the office to break out to.
This is such a limited space. I mean, five acres isn't much land to work with. And utilizing and maximizing your space, that would mean utilizing as much of the rooftop potentially as possible. Also, I didn't see anything in your three different scenarios. What was your max number of parking spots that you would need in each of those scenarios? And would you achieve that via the parking deck that you do the wraparound on the apartments?
Um, so...
Because it looks like mostly everybody, if anybody utilizing this is either gonna have to park somewhere else or in the parking deck.
Correct. So I think that, you know, because we are part of kind of the downtown fabric, we have on-street parking that we can use to our advantage that's on Broad. We're providing a certain number of surface parks. I can't read the exact numbers on here, but it's in the, looks like it's the neighborhood of about 80 spaces on the street that are integrated with the streetscape with inside the site. And then the remainder of that parking is nested in the parking deck. So, you know, typically in a deck like that, the first floor might be for the, you know, commercial flex parking like that. And then you might nest the residential parking up in upper levels. I think all told on here, it varies. I think the max we have is 445 spaces. You know, but there's a, there's a substantial amount that's kind of integrated into the streetscape on those, on those streets there, even some parallel parking. But we can make that occur kind of in a very similar fashion that occurs in downtown today with angled parking and things on the street to offset having to build a bunch of structured parking and make it part of the environment.
And I get that. I think it's just presuming grossly on the street parking, you know, because if you look abroad, a lot of that parking is utilized throughout the day just for the county admin building and the other business authority there. And you add this kind of a complex in, we're gonna be really strained, I think, for parking. But anyways.
Yeah, I think that...
I think we're gonna have some open up though because they're moving so much of their stuff out to the...
I mean, from our start, we're only really counting the ones that are kind of right in front of our site. And with mostly food and beverage, that's a nighttime peak, I think, which is good. And so that'd be counter, counterused to when the, the government facilities may use it. But there's a, there's a, we're trying to park as much as we can kind of within the site and using just those spaces that are on Broad in front of the site. Not necessarily counting other spaces up the street.
Okay.
Code requires for this plan, and we noted, it's hard to see because the font says well, but the code requires 446 spaces. And in this plan, we're showing 447. And so when you get this document, it'll be easier to read. So we show required versus, you know, what's shown. And we've tried to meet or exceed the parking requirement in all the versions.
Okay. And just one last, and this is just my own opinion. With the, the very strong need, you know, you felt the need for apartments, it grossly overtakes most of the property on all three scenarios. And I, and unfortunately, I think it made the whole complex look rather vanilla, rather bland. I didn't see a whole lot of creativity. I'm kind of disappointed. But that's just my opinion. It's because the apartment section is so large, it leaves the, the rest of it just, eh, very minimal.
Anyone else? All right. Who's next?
Hi, Josh McGarrett again. Just a quick one. Do you have a pointer?
Yes, the pointer works.
So we're getting into the numbers. So if you have some coffee.
So that'll work.
All right. Taking all of kind of what we've talked about, you know, from community meetings to market studies, to what Nelson provided, the next task for us was to reach an achievable goal, to provide a financing solution, or not a solution, to moving the project forward. And so we looked at this a number of ways. I'll skip, we'll, we'll kind of run through the project schedule of kind of where we see if we move forward from today. Kind of continuing the conversation that may elongate, but wanted to give an idea of kind of where we stand today to kind of get construction off the ground and, and, you know, to a completion standpoint. So just, we'll try to hit through this. Here we are today, taking the end of last year, the first month or so of this year to wrap up due diligence findings. Kind of a summary of everything we've talked about. The next stage for the project would be a design development stage, which is taking the feedback from the council members tonight, further conversation with council staff. I'm sure everyone will have community feedback as well, continuing to work the plan. Continue to refine the public space detail. If, you know, there were certain aspects that were unimpressive, see if we can push and pull on those to continue to enhance the development. What are the streetscape features, things along those lines as you start to get a little more detailed? And then hopefully come up with kind of final use and density as well as a development agreement to move forward with getting the project off the ground. Following that would be a rezoning, kind of getting through planning commission, city council approvals, things of those lines. From there, we would release Nelson or whomever the architect would be to design a full construction doc set. Given the complexity of the project, we think that'll probably take, you know, the better part of six months. And they would work with mechanical, electrical, ADA, other consultants along the way. We would start at that point having a zone site and development agreement in place. We would start pre-leasing and leasing efforts for the commercial space in earnest. And then launch the financing efforts as well to stay in front of those. And then, you know, actively discuss, you know, probably on a weekly or bi-weekly basis with the various city departments and county departments who would be involved in getting to a permitted set. Following the plan-set development, construction docs, we'd get to hopefully a land disturbance permit where we could start putting utilities in the ground. And then from there, building permits to get vertical construction underway. We'd negotiate, we'd go to the general contractor, we'd go to the subcontractor market, price it. We'd negotiate through that, sign a construction contract. And then we anticipate that taking roughly about four months. And then development is probably about a three-month period from, call it shovel in the ground to final CO and stabilization of the final community. So we can skip on to the numbers unless anyone has any conversation. Okay? You can hit the next one, Randy. Okay, so we'll work top to bottom here. And we basically take the biggest chunk of feasibility of getting it off the ground, which is the residential, which is, you know, going back to the market. What, you know, brings life and makes these successful, looking at other kind of downtown redevelopment studies. These, on the red-hand, the red-hand column are essentially straight out of the market study. Whether it's rental revenue for residential, for commercial. And then where the market study does not reference, we just went with standard market terms that are standard for whether it's the southeast region, the Noonan Market, or the Atlanta MSA. Nothing really out of the box there. So what you'll see here is we anticipate a 6% vacancy on the residential, 20% on the commercial. We see a gross potential income of 5.8 million on the apartments and 600,000, 612,000 on the commercial space. This is the operating expenses. Payroll, of course, is the big one. R and M, which is repairs and maintenance, CS, contract services, that's gonna be our landscaping, keeping up seasonal flowers, decorating for holidays, keeping the central lawn maintained in proper order. Any turnover of commercial or residential units. Marketing, general administrative, just kind of housekeeping, take general business. Taxes and insurance, that's property taxes. We may have some private property taxes involved, but I would say most of those are gonna be property taxes. And then of course, insurance, management, capital reserves required by lenders, and of course, the utility bill, keeping the lights on. All of that settles down into a net operating income. You know, revenue less expenses of about three and a half million dollars. Going back to the plan that was created, going back to, you know, comments made tonight. This is, it's a special project. So whether it's the south side of the development not being a back door, coming in with heavy, heavy masonry facade, incorporating historical elements, having rooftop patios for whether it's office space and/or food and beverage. We anticipate this being a very costly project. Down here, and we'll head up the next slide in more detail, we see an all-in construction cost of 83 to 84 million dollars. If you go back, Randy, in terms of financeability, right, where's the punchline? The, the return on cost, which is essentially your net operating income over your cost, is a 4.2%. That is not a healthy yield when you look at a money market index that is reaching a four and a half, which is essentially risk-free money. This is a, you know, development is an at-risk industry. 25,000 square feet of commercial space. And, you know, building what would be just a handful of parking decks among the Southern Crescent of Atlanta is certainly something where you're gonna need a slightly healthier return. And so we looked at it and we brainstormed on it. And kind of skipping through, and again, you'll have this as a lead behind, so follow up with any questions based on the detailed construction budget here. If you head over to the next one, this includes soft costs, permitting cost, carry cost, et cetera. This is our forward-looking financeability. So what we just saw was the project doesn't work today, right? At a 4.2 return on cost. So we said, okay, well, let's look forward. We went, we went through the timeline today. It could be a fourth quarter of 2024 to a first quarter of 2025 before we're able to stick a shovel in the ground anyway. So what does that look like? And so there's a few variables that would go into looking at today's numbers and what tomorrow's forecast could be. Here at the top, we have the net operating growth assumptions by quarter. These are obtained through talking with kind of industry leaders, reading economic forecasts, looking at where we think supply and demand may be headed as well with construction slowing down across the board. Below that is an anticipated quarterly cost growth based on that 83 to 84 million dollar number. We see it staying flat. And then towards the end of this year, having a fairly significant takeback, kind of 5% to 10%. We think that moves into the first quarter, the winter months of next year. And then we think a lot of projects that are gonna be just building up on the starting line once those costs come down. And we'll get to kind of where the, the forward-looking financing curve goes, we think they're gonna go. So by the start of next year, we think costs are gonna begin to take back up. Not at the rate that we've seen inflation go obviously over the last 24 months, but certainly kind of at least back to historical norms. So not all in our favor, but the net result is in our favor. Kind of working down, we'll start on the left-hand column here. This is today. This is the NOI we just saw, the net operating income. This is the cost of the project resulting in a 4.2% financing return on cost. Below that, we look at where the LIBOR or the SOFR, standard overnight financing rate, where that is anticipated per, you know, call it Wall Street. Where do they anticipate it going? What you'll find is at what we just talked about, it's four and a half to 4.6 today. They believe it goes up. I think we all, you know, if you're following the Fed, the Federal Reserve will continue to push interest rates up to obtain inflation. We think by third quarter of this year, that tops out at 5.35. Rumors are the target is, you know, in that 5.3 to 5.5 range at this point. And then from there, they'll be again to slowly taper those back off. And so what we're looking at is we develop the concept plan, go through zoning, develop the construction docks, get contracts and permits in place. Following these financial trends along the way, the hope is, is to capture a moment in time to get the project off the ground. So staying in the, kind of the, the black top half of the screen, we get to a point where the forward curve, the financing rate begins to mellow out kind of in that mid-3s to low-3s range. And what it results in is still, and I'm sorry, I'm, I have not worked my way down. We'll stick back over here. This 4.6 today, typically to get a project at risk off the ground, you need two percentage points, two basis points, or 200 basis points or two percentage points above that. So the project, while it's penciled to a 4.2 today, would need to be a 6.5 or better. And so that is a very widespread. So again, forecasting forward, we see... So again, forecasting forward, we see a delta of 2.5% between where the financeability needs to be and today's return on cost trims itself all the way down to less than a point. So under half. But we yield a project that is still not financeable, even giving the multifamily component. So we said, okay, trying to look at what is the lowest hanging subsidy, right? If it's hotel, we're going to need land, we're going to need parking deck, we're going to need tax abatement. Or is it multifamily and kind of the plan that Jeremy and team came up with? And so given the 25,000 square feet of commercial space, given the four-sided wrapped parking deck, given the condo quality finishes of what we're trying to deliver, something that's truly never been seen from the south side of Atlanta, we said, okay, well, what about a scenario where, you know, there's credit for the land, for what the city's put in and the investment to preserve, to create this public space and not have this chewed up in its entirety as, you know, former groups have proposed? And in that scenario, where the only subsidy to ask for is the land to get this project going, it does equal into a positive delta to the return on costs needed based on kind of where the timeline stands today. So I know that was a lot of information. I'm sorry it jumped around a little bit.
It's okay, you're leaving it behind.
Yeah, that's right. So you have my number, so we're happy to come back and talk through it or kind of, you know, answer any questions. But we wanted to leave a scenario where we could continue to move forward, build a destination, lifestyle, community, and, you know, that Noonan would be proud of, and continue to look forward and move it forward. Working with everyone, and as, you know, Dave and Doug started us with, this is just, this is a kind of a first conversation. Continue to refine it and, you know, hopefully deliver something that the council, mayor and staff and people of Noonan and Coweta would be proud of.
Well, you're right about two things. This is the first part of the conversation. And Noonan is not like any other place on the south side of Atlanta.
Agreed.
So we're in agreement with those two things, which I both think make the project successful as we move out and discuss things that we discussed tonight about making it unique for us, because that's who we are. There's some holes in this, there's no doubt about it. But I, but I think, you know, it's going to be a lot of work to get it done, but it's certainly worthy, or we wouldn't have spent what we've spent on it already if we didn't think it was. So Doug, is that, does that wrap it up? Or am I leaving anybody?
Let me just wrap up quickly and then we'll open up the questions. And so what we tried to merge was, you know, you say you weren't repressed with what we've done, but if you had have come to us and said, we want you to do diligence, money's not an issue. Go find what everybody wants, put that on a piece of paper, and, you know, the city's got plenty of money. That would have been a totally different. Nelson would have come back with something, you'd say, wow, that's, that's the best-looking use of five-point and a quarter acre.
Did Clint not tell you that?
Yeah, that's, that's not what we interpret as our, we were trying to minimize. We'd love to come in and say, hey, we don't need free land, we don't need parking. But then you'd be looking at a whole block of apartments. And that's not what, so we tried to merge what we thought was a good use of the property with also weighing in very heavily the subsidies that it would require to do just what everybody may want. So please keep that in mind, because we would love to go out there, you know, with...
Sure.
So we've tried to blend those two so that we're not coming in and saying, we need X millions of dollars versus five times X million of dollars.
And I think everybody sitting up here understands that blend is where it's going to happen. It's not going to happen on one extreme or the other. It's going to happen in the middle. But at the same time, it's not something that we want it to happen in the middle to the extent that it's not what we're proud of. Because as we have all said several times, this, we're going to give one shot at this. And your timeline is great, we appreciate it. Think it's a little aggressive, because we've got some work to do before we can start coming up with true, true design. We've got some other comments we probably want to make, not tonight, but there's some opportunities there that I think we, we may, may want to discuss among ourselves. And, you know, we go from there. So I don't know, Mr. Phillips, how do we continue to communicate? What are the, what's the, how do we do that? Because all seven of us calling Doug, any other word?
Yeah, no, I don't think we do that. I think at this point in time, I don't think it's fair to ask the development team to come up and create something as magical as Doug just said. I think it's this body's and our responsibility for us to come together, see exactly what our vision is. What is our threshold of investment that we're willing to or not willing to? And I don't think until they have that type of information can they go forward and really make those decisions.
That was a big question for them as you were stepping through this, I'm sure.
Yes.
What's, what's the level?
Right. And we'd love to come back and say the level is zero.
That's fine. They need you to know our level of risk. They don't know that yet.
And I think that's what we need to provide there before they do anything else.
And the numbers that we provided, you know what you have in the land. You can see when we give you these breakdowns what a parking deck costs. A lot of cities, we're working in Norcross, we're working in Sugar Hill, they contributed the land and the parking deck. And it's all multifamily, but they wanted the multifamily to bring the energy to the Sugar Hill epicenter and the Norcross area. And, you know, what we try to do is minimize those expenses from the city.
In that performance, I don't know if you could answer, let's, let's say we honored Councilmember Alexander's request that there was no multifamily. That performance, it looks like it requires what type of subsidy?
Well, I think it really depends on what you want programmed, right? So if you want a full-service hotel, it's going to be one level of subsidy. If you want a limited service, if you want X amount of commercial. And so I think it's, it's really the program plus the level of subsidy combined is what's going to help us drive. We can design something that you'll be proud of, I can promise you that. But with those two inputs, what do you guys want there with the consensus and what level of subsidy are you going to provide? We can give you a menu of options.
Right.
And so that's, that's the guidance that we need to be successful in delivering your vision.
And that's the work we need to do.
Right.
Absent of...
And we can, we can help give you any type of analysis. We can run a hotel model and say, if you want, you know, ABC, you know, this is what it's going to take. And we have all those models pretty much off our shelf. And we're, you know, lucky to have Doug and his construction team as part of the development team. So once you give us guidance on that, we can give you any type of analysis. But it all, at the end of the day, boils down to dollars, right? No matter, it has to be viable. And viable is determined by the construction cost, the revenue that it produces, the expenses to produce the net income. And, you know, so it's really, it would, it ends up being, it's just a math equation. And so that's, if you give us some guidance on the building program and the level of incentives in order to achieve that, or, you know, we can come back and give you some really clear advice on that.
Do you want to say anything? Either. Anyone else?
I guess I, so we understand what they need. So the next question, I think, is for us, as we're going to have to chat a few times most likely. So I think we probably ought to consider some form of schedule as to have some meetings to where we can be face-to-face and have been hammering this thing out to give them proper directive. Otherwise, phone calls and things of that sort aren't going to get it done, and I'm sure that's probably where you want to go.
They're not. So that was going to be my next comment.
All right, very good.
At our, at our meeting on Tuesday, I would ask everyone to come to that meeting, it's not an agenda item, so I'll just bring it up under mine, to have a discussion about what that schedule kind of looks like. So if you'll bring your calendars with you, your phone, whatever you use to keep track of yourself, that would be great.
I bring my wife.
I'm not, I'll leave that out there. You can bring, send it to you if you like. So we just need to figure out what that schedule is. And so we'll discuss that next Tuesday.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, as we produce this information for you, you'll be able to see that the multifamily or apartments is subsidizing a lot of the green space and the space that the community wants. So that's why we program that in. You'll see also that the retail doesn't return a lot of income. Neither does the flex space, but it provides those services for the community. So again, the multifamily, we're, we'd love to develop the site with no multifamily, but it subsidizes in lieu of the city subsidizing. So we tried to find that point that made, you know, the most sense. And it's not 500 apartments.
So clearly, we own the land.
Yes, sir.
So if you're doing a multifamily deal, are you going out, are we going out and saying to Post Properties, we've got land here for you to build 220 apartments and we're selling that land to them? Tell me what that deal looks like.
We will develop this whole, our team is committed long-term, as we told you.
Okay.
That income would pay our debt service, our equity, and we would hope to, you know, make money in the equity that we're putting in it. So we would not, we would self-develop this with our team. We would not, the only component that would be possibly parceled out would be a hotel group.
And that would be a fee simple transaction?
Yes, sir.
Between the hotel group and the city of Noonan?
I don't know another way that the hotel would be that component.
It still gets back to that fundamental question. If you tell us the building program and the level of quality that you expect, we can tell you the level of subsidy that would need to be viable. So I think the clear message is no matter what use, whether it's apartments, commercial, hospitality, just given market rents and market offers and cost, there is going to be some level of public subsidy that will be required to make it viable. That's just the big picture, but it just depends on the next. If it's heavy hospitality and a lot of townhomes, it's going to be a higher number. If it's, you know, the lowest non-public subsidy, it's going to be a certain amount of apartments, right? And so that's, like I said, we were kind of chasing ourselves a little bit, just trying to figure out like balancing public interests with, you know, a private development model. And it was difficult without knowing exactly what the role of the council is in terms of that building program.
But again, to your question, our intent is not to parcel out four different groups and disappear. We're at risk for the success of this project.
So someone, I forget who it was, mentioned if there was some type of governmental participation on the site? Whether it was office space, whatever it was. Step us through what that would look like from, from our perspective of...
Well, I mean, I mean, in the most simplest terms, anytime you have a credit-worthy tenant like the government, it lowers our cost of capital. So it makes, it basically provides an insurance policy, because the city of Noonan, the Coweta County, they're not going to default, right? So we know we've got a long-term tenant in place. So it basically provides a level of insurance for the other uses. So it's, it's just, it's a very nice to have. And so if there was a government or civic use and we could get a long-term lease agreement in place, then that allows us to do other more creative things across the site. So whereas the, you know, whereas the apartments were subsidizing some of those other uses, now the government use could be used as an anchor to subsidize some of those other uses. So it's really just looking at what the needs are. You know, there's different types of needs within the, within the city, the county, the state, right?
So talk to us just a minute, I know we've gone an hour and a half here, but these are questions I think everybody needs to hear the answers to before we start that intergroup conversation. Talk to us a minute about, you know, taxable districts, whether or not you think that this is a tax district program, whether or not you think any type of bond, you know, bonded indebtedness from the city using our development authorities. Tell us about that financing piece for a second, if you would.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, what we would like to say is, again, there's, once you give us the program, we can give you the total development cost of that program. And we'll tell you in terms of dollars what that means. There's different types of creative financing solutions, whether they're TIFs, pilots, you know, TADS, I mean, any type of bond issuances, things like that. And every city and county and state has a different war chest or toolbox that they use to incentivize these types of developments, depending on what they want, right? And so I would say we pride ourselves on being good public-private partners. We've done a lot of these different tax incentivized transactions. And so we're flexible in terms of how those incentives come to the project. But, you know, it's really what do you have available as a city and as a county to make this happen? And so, you know...
The financing picture you showed us did not include any of those?
No, so that was just private financing.
Just want to make sure everybody understands that's...
Yeah, big picture right now, construction debt is eight or 9%, whereas it was 3% 12 months ago, right, 15 months ago. And so really, our cost of construction financing has more than doubled in the last 15 months. So, you know, but, you know, you can also go buy risk-free government debt at 4.5% yields now. So it's, you know, it's challenging right now, because interest rates have gone so far, they've moved so far, so far, so fast.
Right. Anyone else? Anything else?
The only other thing I want to add is I know we're talking about nuts and bolts of this, but the only site of the effects because of project that has all the pieces but doesn't look good, doesn't feel good, doesn't meet those requirements of the city in terms of how they should feel and look, not going to be successful either. So I think that needs a lot more attention.
Right, we have looked at it that way. This is a quality project and you see a lot of brick construction and not, not what you see in some other places around metro Atlanta.
And I just want to say, I do appreciate the time and effort you put into this. I know you did put a lot of time, you know, man-hours into this, so I appreciate the thought that went into it. I think what I'm trying to say, what I was trying to say is, we want something that is very Noonan, and it's, it's unique. I mean, you can drive up anywhere around Atlanta and you seek the same product, and that's not us. But thank you again for the time and effort.
We appreciate your time. Thank you. Have a good evening. Safe travels home. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Second.
Is there a second? All of us in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like, thank you.